Order. We can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best will with the righteousness of our own.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We do have one visitor signed in wishing to speak, Ms. McCann. Just to remind you, this is not an open dialogue with the board. It's just a speaking, and you get three minutes.
Okay, do I stand there, or do I stand?
You may stand wherever you'd like.
I wanted to be easy for you. And I'll move along. Okay. Good evening. My name's Jennifer McCann, and I have two children in the district schools. I wanted to address the board today about the middle school climate and culture. I have a seventh-grade son who openly identifies as LGBTQ. Children, due to the benefit of a more open society, the vastness of the Internet, and education are earlier and earlier becoming more aware of their identities. My son has had a problem since fifth grade with a particular student. Instead of leaping on every little problem, I kept a record so that once, or even if, a pattern emerged, I could let the school know. Last week, a child struck out against my child in a homophobic manner. I immediately reported it, and in fact, it turned out to be the child with whom we've had a history of problems. The school is dealing with the incident and pattern appropriately. However, in my experience as a parent, a teacher, I used to be one, a board member of another school, I used to be one of those two, I'm a domestic violence attorney who spends more time than any of you will ever care to know dealing with issues that affect children. I understand that disciplining a single child means both punitive action and educational action, and those things don't change an entire school culture. I know this is partially cultural because I've spoken with mothers whose children have reported general homophobic behaviors by their peers. We must address the needs of LGDTBQ, all those letters, and children in our middle school without hiding them away. I do not want them to feel shame for who they are, for it is shame and bullying that lead to middle-school-aged children down a path of mental health problems. Nor do I want a culture to flourish where they only receive open support in high school through the gay-straight alliance. I would very much like for the school district to consider and be fully supportive of creating some sort of club or other support system for LGTBQ children and their straight friends and allies in middle school so that they have a safe space to be supportive of one another and to begin to change the culture of middle school. My son has made a presentation to the middle school administration, but I'm both my son's advocate and ally, and I will help him, and I will fight with him. I understand that middle school is a difficult time developmentally because so much is changing, and not just in the body, but in the brain as well. But rather than pretend this doesn't exist, I would like to see our schools take more active measures to change the culture so that all students, regardless of their sexual or gender orientation, feel at all stages of their educational careers here welcomed, supported, and full members of their school societies. We need to address systemic issues and not individual issues regarding LGBTQ children, and we have to do it earlier because they are identifying earlier. Thank you for your time, and you'll keep seeing me.
Thank you. For the board and committees, ladies, I know we had a transportation committee event. I'll let you go first.
Just a very quick update. We met today. We were just reviewing that we were going over our first student app. Many of us were using it on our phones. Some of us were using it on an actual laptop. And we decided that we wanted to continue testing this app. We are going to meet again in May, and we will report out again later.
Great, thank you. I am on here for two, I guess. So, the BOSI's elections coming up, we are required to, you know, vote for, as a school district, for the board members. It's uncontested. There's just three people running for, three incumbents running for three spots. I don't know if you guys have received anything on that. I think we all received their budget book in the mail, so just bringing that, was it, Mrs. Cuselli, next time we have to?
The sixteenth, we have to have a vote.
Okay. So, just making you aware of that. If there's any questions, whatever, we can get you whatever information you might want. The, also with the exit poll discussion. Every year, we look at this, are we, do we want to keep doing it? That's essentially, I guess, what we're looking for tonight, Mrs. Cuselli, if we're going to keep doing it. And if so, then next time, we can talk if we want to make any modifications to it or just leave it the way it is. So, is everybody good with continuing the exit poll? It seems to provide good data for us, you know, good baseline, I think, so, myself. Okay. Then we will continue, Mrs. Cuselli. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Excuse me. I think I'm battling a little bit of a cold. Pleased to welcome Mr. Pigeon and representatives from the high school with the Students and Teachers of the Month for March, April, no, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. From February, January, February, March.
March, yes. Thank you very much. Athletics and a little bit of that virus has knocked a few of our presenters and nominees out of the picture, but we have a number of folks here tonight, so we're really excited, as always, to shine a spotlight on the wonderful work being done by our students at the high school as well as our faculty. So, we'll just kind of jump right in. Why don't we start with our Student of the Month? Julia Georgakis was nominated as Student of the Month by Robin Flowers Quinney, Mr. Mitch Maxick, and Mr. Mark Rep. Robin states that Julia is a great student that is very hardworking. She is always helpful to other students and her friends. We often call her Mom. Always helpful to other students and her friends and the group because she's always there to give good advice and is very supportive. Mr. Maxick states that Julia is a wonderful, soft-spoken person with a strong heart that cares for others and a smile that is contagious. She is always kind to her peers, her teachers, and carries herself in an aura of confidence. Mr. Rep states that Julia is unfailingly polite, conscientious student. She takes responsibility for her own work and keeping track of her assignments. It always executes every task, no matter what relative importance, to the very best of her ability. She's an attentive student who appreciates the value of other people's time as well as their efforts. Julia's demeanor is kind and considerate. She is humble, hardworking, self-effacing, and all of which makes her a standout in class. Congratulations to Julia for being chosen as January Student of the Month. Along with January, we have a number of nominees, starting with Mr. Mark Buozolacci. Mr. Mark Buozolacci was nominated for Teacher of the Month by his student, Chance Backus, and myself. Chance states that Mr. Buozolacci is a very hard-working teacher who cares about every student at Amherst Central High School. He's not only a caring teacher, but a friend to so many students at the school. He dedicates much of his time and energy to making others' lives easier. Mr. Pigeon states that in addition to his regular student-support role, Mr. Buozolacci has immersed himself in the Amherst learning community, starting with helping at many events when he was assigned at the middle school. After moving with Chance up to the high school, Mr. Buozolacci immediately became involved at school events and worked closely with our culinary program to offer our hospitality program help with serving parents a small meal at our open house. Rumor has that the Amherst Central High School's signature sauce is a derivative of the Buozolacci family recipe from Italy. In addition, he has produced videos that features our athletics, the high school, and our district. Mr. Buozolacci is quick to support his colleagues with his homemade culinary delights, and he even provides a department water cooler and hauls up five-gallon water coolers up to the second floor quite regularly. I think it was today or yesterday that I saw you struggling to get another one of those up there. Parker can be seen at many events, supporting our students and teachers. He is a great addition to our school. Congratulations, Mr. Buozolacci, for being chosen as January's Teacher of the Month. Ms. Pam Fordham. Ms. Fordham was nominated as Teacher of the Month by the Pathfinders and Catalina Matos. Catalina states that Ms. Fordham is not only an amazing English teacher, but also a teacher of our Race in America class, an important class that leads many conversations that most students wouldn't have if they were not in the class. She is one of the most committed and dedicated teachers Catalina has ever had. She strives to make a difference in our lives, in the way we look at life. She also cares for students in a very personal way. You can always talk to her about everything, even if she's just met you. That is why Ms. Fordham would make a great Teacher of the Month. Congratulations to Ms. Fordham for being nominated as one of January's Teachers of the Month. Parker Alibisi was nominated for this month as well. Wasn't able to make it tonight. Next one. Erica Norris was also nominated for this upcoming month. Couldn't make it as well as Byron Stickle's, but we have Ms. Mary Beckwith here. This is a long one, so everybody get comfortable. Ms. Mary Beckwith is nominated as Teacher of the Month by the Pathfinders, Ms. Snyder and Ms. Garland Gaddino. Ms. Snyder states that Mary Bee, is one of her kind names in the building, is one of the kindest, gentlest, patient souls I've ever met. What strikes me most about Mary as a teacher is that she's able to address various IP goals among a diverse group of students while nurturing a sense of fun with them. She encourages them to develop their identities and to become active, involved members of the school community. She supports their effort within and outside the school setting. When I watch her work with students within the parameters of a function such as a Tiger Cafe, I marvel at the quiet guidance she is able to provide from the sidelines while facilitating her students to engage in authentic social interactions with peers and adults. Their experiences at Amherst High School will undoubtedly be positive and impact the decisions they will make as they become productive members of society, a goal we have for all those students. We have seen her students grow and develop during the years with her and her amazing assistance, and she continues to keep in touch with many of her former students to this day. I actually should not refer to her students as her students as we share many of the same kids in our ELA-10 class. I always look forward to working with Ms. Bee to establish rich and meaningful learning experiences for all of our students. She's an invaluable member of our school and very proud to say she's one of my closest friends. Ms. Gaddino states that Ms. Bee is an educator with many superpowers. She does not wear a bright costume or a flashy cape, just the opposite. Always, most people in the building know her students. She herself keeps a low profile, whether it is her students in her class, in GSA. All of Mary's efforts are to make them shine, and she does just that. Mary's entire career has been about pushing the boundaries of our notions of school. First, Mary pushes to have her students included in traditional classrooms, supporting them as they experience traditional instruction and they complete traditional coursework. Second, she pushes her students well beyond the walls of the classroom in places most educators rarely would venture. Mary's students experience vocational training, visit and train in area businesses, and regularly venture through the Amherst community. Mary's students thrive at Amherst. They are involved in operetta and clubs, fundraisers, assemblies. They make friends, they do the announcements, and they're able to make Amherst a much better place. They make a difference, and no one has fostered the growth and initiative and happiness more than Ms. Bee. Through it all, she maintains an upbeat, cheerful demeanor. Walk into her classroom, and you'll have sunshine on a cloudy day. Always friendly, easy to laughter. Mary's a joy to work with. Sometimes, a teacher can be best measured by her students' success in life. While still in high school, Mary helped place one of her students, Amed, into a work-study program that turned out to a full-time job at Beachwood Nursing Home. You'd see Amed every time, almost every time I visited my parents. One time, Amed told me, "Ms. G, keep your father," I will keep my father in your eye and your mother in my heart. Always, he would ask about Ms. Bee, saying, "She is the best teacher ever in the world." Congratulations to Ms. Bee for being chosen as Teacher of the Month in the longest nomination ever. Maxonic Rubb is at a track meet tonight, as well as Max Whittman, who was Students of the Month for February. And so was, so is Ms. Keppel. She's also the track coach, just she was not able to make it this evening as well. Did I forget anybody? Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you to all our students who are able to be here and their parents for all the hard work you put in to support your daughter and the work that she does here at our school. We know that good kids don't just happen through the product of good parenting, which takes a lot of hard work, so thank you and nice job. Thank you to our Teachers of the Months who are here. I'm lucky enough to see your work firsthand, and I'm very proud of it, but I'm also happy that it's able to be shared here at a public meeting with the Board of Ed and folks that don't get the chance to be in the school and in your classrooms. Keep up the great work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pigeon. The next item that we have is the Budget and Fund Balance Update. So, as you may have heard, Mrs. Bezinski, please join us. As you may have heard, the politicians ended up finalizing the state's budget, and they were able to get it in on time on Sunday, March 31st. As a result, we're able to present to you tonight a final balanced budget for your consideration. And as long as we have some direction from you after this presentation, we will know what we can do next week when we'll have a resolution available with either some amendments or as-is. So, this is an opportunity for you to see our final presentation, and then President Steinwee will ask afterwards, after questions for the board's poll of whether or not we want to move forward with this budget. Welcome.
Thank you. So, similar to previous formats, all of our updated information, we highlight it in blue. And while there are many categories that are highlighted, there are only a few changes. They just were in several areas. So, for the state budget update, we've identified only a few of the changes, but the ones that most affected us. Amherst was receiving $150,000 of an increase over the original budget that was presented in January. In addition, the ability for school districts to establish a TRS reserve as a sub-fund of the ERS reserve was approved. That was something that school districts across New York State advocated for because with no control over the TRS rates from year to year, 1% up or down can have a major swing on our budget. So, allowing districts to be able to put funds aside in the event that the rates increase significantly will really help us in the future control those costs in future budgets to help keep our tax levies steady and our budgets steady. That will actually be something that we'll be looking for some guidance from the board. If the board would like, we can establish the TRS as a sub-fund of the ERS reserve, and that's done through board resolution. So, if the board wants that, we can present that to you at a future meeting for your consideration. Another piece that was approved with the intro budget was the staggering of building condition surveys over five years. Currently, all districts in New York State have to have their building condition surveys done every five years, but everyone had to have them done in the same year. So, the last time was 2015, and they were due again in 2020. So, this new law will have 20% of the districts in New York State required to perform their BCSs in 2020 and another 20% the following year. So, there will be, in this initial period, some districts that go up to nine years without having them done. We were getting ready to plan to have ours done in the fall or early spring, but now, not knowing which districts are going to be chosen for which year, we've kind of put that on hold. And the rumor is we'll have a list of what districts are assigned each year sometime in January. So, more to come on that. That does change our plans a little bit moving forward with our capital project, long-range plans.
And according to the most recent information, they plan to start with what they perceive, the state perceives to be the neediest buildings in the first year, in that first 20%, so buildings that are in the most dire condition, or districts, I should say. We don't anticipate any in that 20%, but we'll know once those lists come out.
And the tax cap was made permanent with no modifications. Advocacy efforts were looking to have some modifications made to the cap. One of the largest modifications requested was that BOSI's capital expenditures could become an exclusion. District local expenditures for capital work is an exclusion, but the BOSI's expenses weren't. So, that was something that districts were hoping had implemented, but it did not, did not make the cut. The governor does have until tomorrow to make any changes, so we're assuming all of these will go through, but we'll know more tomorrow if any vetoes come through. So, our updated revenue assumptions, we did increase our state aid $150,000 over our last presentation, and we added an additional $50,000 in BOSI's aid. So, if you looked on our state runs, you won't see that reflected in our state runs, and that's because we are planning a year-end project for technology through BOSI's before June, so that will generate aid come in September, but that wouldn't be reflected in our runs yet because it's still an internal plan from the district.
Yeah, and to clarify that plan, it's really a hold that we put on Mr. Watson's budget, Brandon Watson being our technology network manager. So, we, he has budgeted, you know, in the BOSI budget, which is where we purchase our hardware, a certain amount, and annually, we kind of hold it as we're monitoring the budget because that's an area where if expenditures come in higher than expected, we will be able to save some money to offset it. So, with the fund balance projections that Mrs. Bezinski has been providing, we're able to, so far, reach our goal of not spending what's appropriated, and so it looks like we'll be able to spend some of that money on refreshing our technology, but it's not a year-end project that is above and beyond our budgeted amount. It's in our budget. We just kind of hold it hostage on the technology department because being self-funded with our health care, that's always an area where we have some uncertainty, and we want to make sure we're certain before we make that expenditure.
For our transfers, up to this point, we've included $60,000 from our tax cert reserve, which is offset by an equal appropriation or expenditure line. And we have now added $200,000 from our employee benefit accrue liability reserve, and that is the same amount that we had in the current year, so we're not increasing that allocation. We're just matching it year to year, and as always, our goal will not be to use it and only use it if needed for appropriate expenditures. So, our revenue projections have our state aid coming in at $16.3 million, which is about 3.9%, and that does include the $50,000 that we added in for the projected BOSI's aid. The line for the county sales tax, it only changed by, I think, about $60, and I did that for rounding purposes. So, it's still 0% change with, which is an assumption that it'll stay somewhat flat from this year. We have increased the transfers to 260, which is the same as current year. And unappropriated fund balance, we had a $500,000 placeholder in there up to this point, which again is the contingency amount that we have offset an expenditure line of that same amount. So, we've used an additional $420,000 of unappropriated fund balance to close our final gap. In the current year, we needed to use $480,000. So, while it's not a significant difference, it's about $60,000 less, we are pleased that it's moving in the right direction.
And just to remind everybody, the transfers, we have $200,000 from the EBLOR Reserve for anticipated retirement expenditures and $60,000 from the tax cert reserve where we deal with any litigation and/or tax assessment funds that may be due to the school or our county bill that we get.
So, overall, that leaves our revenues at $60,143,000, which is a 2.72% decrease over the current year. For personnel, on the expenditure assumptions, we have a 2.36% increase in contractual obligations. We've already spoken about the teacher and administrator retirements and the special education reduction due to pupil enrollment, some of the additions we have at the elementary school and the middle school. New for this presentation, with one of our non-pub schools closing, emerging with one of the others, we support those buildings with nurses. So, the school that was closing had a part-time nurse that we, was on our staff, so we won't have that expense for next year. And we had a few salary breakage, about $61,000 of salary breakage from four resignations. Three of those positions will be rehired. And as we do with all of our vacant positions, we always look at the program and the structure of each department to fully bet and make sure that we are rehiring and restructuring in the most appropriate and feasible way for our district. So, this is no different. We didn't have any change to ERS, TRS, our health insurance. We had an increase of $200,000, and our, as we get further through the year, our projections are very close to that, so we're really pleased with that number as well. The general support side changed by $35,000, but it wasn't an increase in our overall budget. We had that $35,000, we had it in instruction, but through, through a little bit of double-checking, we found that the general support side was a more appropriate place for that expenditure. So, that is $35,000 that we will use to purchase security cameras and enhance our security across the district, and that is fully aided from year to year on that specific code. BOSI's transportation and debt service all stay the same as our last presentation, which leaves our overall expenditure projections at about, just under $1.6 million of an increase over the current year, $60,143,000, which is an increase of 2.72%. Moving on to fund balance, again, the numbers that are changed are highlighted in blue. So, March was a big month for us with state aid revenues. We received some very large state aid payments, so those are reflected in the year-to-date revenues. We have about $5 million of additional revenues that we expect to receive in the final quarter of the year, and we have about $20 million that we still expect to expense. That includes purchases, contracts, personnel, salaries, all of that's incorporated into that. On the revenue side, we look like we're going to come pretty close to even on our revenues. Our conservative projections show us under revenue budget by $212. Again, not using any of our fund balance or appropriated reserves. We have an unplanned, or a planned on spending, non-spending of our expenditure, of our appropriation budget of $1.5 million. So, that, along with not spending our revenue, yields $172,000 of positive fund balance movement on this year's budget. I think last presentation, we were at like $178,000. So, we're pretty close to a steady there.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the area where, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we have that technology purchase that we really need to make because devices age out and technology changes, and we need to turn that over regularly and refresh it. But unfortunately, when you look at this picture, in more, I think in more simpler terms, you know, we have $1.3 million that is supporting our budget from our savings account, and we're not spending $1.5 million of our budget. So, the net is that our savings account may grow by a little less than $200,000 when last year, we actually spent close to $300,000 out of our savings account. So, when you look at last year and this year combined, we're still down about $100,000 compared to where we were. And as Mrs. Bezinski is rolling to the next slide, you know, our auditors and our financial advisors have suggested that, you know, $8 million is a good place for us to be with overall fund balance and reserves, and right now, we're at 7.1. So, we continue to try to present a balanced budget that minimizes the use of fund balance and reserves, and when you do support us in using fund balance to support it, we then have the task throughout that year of managing the budget to make sure we don't spend it. So, right now, we're on target for that. So, right now, we're on target for that, but, you know, it's always, it's always a challenge for us. So, we hope at some point, our legislators will come through with the state aid that is truly needed for us to function from year to year without having to constantly worry about whether or not we're going to have enough in the savings account to support our expenditures. I would say a budget that increases from year to year of 2.7% is pretty modest growth. So, we're not a school district that is spending frivolously. Unfortunately, you know, our politicians are not meeting their end of the bargain in terms of providing us with the aid that is needed. You may recall that after the governor's proposal, he proposed $1 billion of new money towards education, and then each chamber, the Senate and Assembly, proposed $1.6 billion, with 1.2 being allocated for foundation aid, the single largest category for school aid. The governor's proposal had $338 million of foundation aid in it. The final budget didn't see an increase in the overall amount. It had $1 billion of new money, and the foundation aid amount went from 338 to about 618. So, that's what, a $300 million increase in the foundation aid amount statewide resulted in $150,000 for Amherst. So, I was pleased that there was some policy things addressed by the politicians during the budget, because we have long wanted the TRS reserve. We've long, we've long advocated for the piggybacking in transportation and staggering the building condition surveys. But certainly, I think I speak for a number of my colleagues when I say we were disappointed in the final aid number, because at this point, with the tax cap being made permanent and the state aid being insufficient, we find ourselves in a position where all we can do is look to our savings account, and as you know, once you dip into that savings account, it's very difficult to replenish. So, my hope is we'll continue our advocacy efforts from year to year, and we'll continue to build that relationship with our elected officials, and continue to have a voice that allows for them to understand what we're dealing with financially here in Amherst.
So, our overall budget is balanced, $60,143,000. It's an increase of about $1.6 million from the current year. It utilizes about $260,000 in reserves and $920,000 in unappropriated fund balance, which in total is about $60,000 less than what we appropriated for the current year. Our fund balance is projected to increase $200,000-ish up to about $7.1 million. And as Mr. Pimela stated, we'll carefully monitor the budget throughout the year to ensure that, to the best of our ability, we're not using any of that, and that we are putting forth a budget that supports our student programming and looks at areas that have been identified as need in the past, such as after-school extracurricular activities in the elementary and transportation from those programs as well. We will have our budget hearing on the night, which is when we will present finally the end of the budget that's adopted by the board. With your approval, we will have this budget in this format or with any modifications that be necessary on your next agenda for action.
Does anybody have any questions?
You mentioned the piggybacking on the transportation contracts. I know we still have two, three more years on our contract. Can you give any initial thoughts on that idea? Is that something that might be helpful to us?
We currently collaborate with two other school districts on our bids. So, we're in the second of a third-year contract with our student. I think where that will be most helpful are in instances where another school might have a special education student going to a specific out-of-district placement, and we have one student that might need to go there. Instead of having a contract with our student, you know, maybe we could share, or they could share with us without having to go out to bid. So, if the bid process has already been established, another district can use that without having to redo the process for the same, for the same need. So, it really, it helps us collaborate more.
How much do building condition surveys cost?
It varies. There's basic building condition surveys and enhanced. So, the basic is the very basic of what the state requires, and the enhanced is what we find more useful because it will look at more in-depth. Our prior year was about $95,000, but it was also an enhanced, so that was in 2015. For our next one, we were looking anywhere from $65,000 to $75,000-ish based on some of the bids we received.
Is that likely to change at all based on the fact that everybody won't be trying to get the same people at the same time? Do you think it might make it any cheaper or no?
I don't know. The state reimburses us for that expense, so you reimburse a certain, it's like 12 cents per square foot. So, the firms who perform the building condition surveys know that, and they know what the reimbursement rate is. We do have an RFP, which we just recently conducted with Erie One, and we did have five different, five different firms respond, and the price per square foot ranged from like 10 and 3/4 cents per square foot to 12 cents per square foot. The expense changes really are dictated by the additional surveys and services that you ask them to perform. So, the basic survey, that's the minimum that's recorded from the state, are pretty much all equal at 6 cents a square foot, but they're not as useful as what, if you're going to spend the money and you're going to have the survey done of your buildings, you want to make sure that it's useful information, and it's something that you can use when you're determining your next capital project and your future outlook on work that will need to be done in your buildings.
Will that stagger in the delayed capital projects?
You're not required to have a building condition survey in order to do capital work. It just helps identify areas of need. But we have our BCS from 2015, and that has been updated significantly with the capital project work that we're doing now. So, we do feel confident that even if we didn't have our BCS again until the fifth year, that we would still have great information to be able to move forward with any future work.
And part of that's the benefit of having longstanding relationships with an architectural firm, is that they continue to upgrade the BCS that they did in 2015 as work plays out. And then, as Jean had indicated, you know, we don't have to go out and spend the money without the aid to do a building condition survey in a year where we're not selected just to get that data to, and keep and continue to improve our buildings. We feel confident that we'd be able to identify the scope of a project with the existing data that we have and our internal staff without, before, if we're not selected in year one, I guess, of this new staggered condition survey. Because that was actually a discussion we had today, so it was interesting that you asked those questions, because we were talking about it this afternoon, and we had the same conversation of whether or not we would need to pay out of pocket without aid for a survey if we wanted to do a project prior to being selected in that staggered five years. And I think that's the conclusion we came to that Mrs. Bezinski presented, is we have a lot of information with our, with Young &amp; Wright, our current architects. Any, any other questions from the board?
All right, and I'm going to poll the board on the budget. So, is everybody, you know, what I'd like to know is if you're okay with the budget as presented for us to approve next week, right, at our meeting? Mr. Smith?
Okay.
Mrs. Bolba?
Yes.
And I am as well. I'd like to also ask one other thing, poll the board. Mrs. Bezinski mentioned about the TRS reserve and that we would have to do a board motion, so, and a future thing, but I want to poll the board about that to see if we're in support of that, of creating that TRS reserve so we can get that moving. I'll start with you, Mrs. Bolba. Are you good with doing that, Mr. Viva? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bolba? I am as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your support with both of those items. We will look to have a resolution on next week's agenda to adopt the budget and to establish the TRS reserve. The quicker we can establish that reserve, the sooner it can become part of the discussion if there is any anticipated year-end funds to actually fund it. Many of you have been on the board for a number of years, so you have seen TRS rates as high as 22%, and you've seen them as low as what's been presented today at 8.8%. And as you may well know, the TRS rates are based on a five-year snapshot of the market, and they are already issuing caution that the rates may go up again next year because the fifth year, that is the, the most, the furthest year, the last year in the five-year snapshot, is a very good year in the market, and it's dropping off. And so, and it's, and it's, the year that is coming on is the most recent year, which, as you know, there was an economic downturn in the month of December just prior to year end, so, and now, you know, it seems to be coming back up. But most of the folks in the TRS offices have said this may be a temporary reprieve with this 8.8%, you know, expected to come back up next year. So, thank you for your support in establishing that reserve.
Great, thank you.
With that, we are on to new business.
All right. We will need a motion for new business items.
I'll make the motion for new business items, E1, A through I, 2, A through E, 3, D and G.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through I, 2, A through E, and 3, D and G, please say aye. Aye. Posed? Motion carries 6-0. So, do we have any follow-up actually?
I just have one to provide the board with a list of last year's exit pool preparation for discussion of questions for this year.
All right. We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make the motion to convene to executive session for collective bargaining negotiations.
In a second. Mr. Viva? All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.